The meeting of the Shreveport City Council now called to order. The Chair would like to recognize at this time the Honorable Commissioner Stormy Gage Watts, our friend and partnership with the Parish Commission. I'd like to ask her to come forth and give us the invocation. And City Attorney Will Bradford will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. God bless you. Thank you Chairman for this opportunity to pray. If you would, let us bow our heads. As we come before the throne of grace and mercy, Lord, we just thank you for the day that you have given unto us, oh Lord. God, we come to you and invite you into this meeting of the City of Shreveport on today, Lord, and we thank you, God, for all that you have done, Father God, up until this very moment. God, we could never thank you or praise you enough for who you are, Lord. God, during these holiday season, God, may we remember those who are bereaved, Father God, and may have heavy hearts, God, those who are without, Lord. Father God, let us take that into consideration on today. Now, Lord, I ask that you bless everyone under the sound of my voice, God. Give these councilwomen and men, Father God, as well as the staff, Lord, all of the knowledge and wisdom that they need to make the best decisions for the citizens of the City of Shreveport. It is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Bradford. Councilwoman Jefferson.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenkins.
She's here.
Councilwoman Corbin.
Present.
Councilwoman Thorpe.
Present.
Councilwoman Lake.
And Councilman Bowman.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the past meeting?
Certainly.
Second.
Okay, I hear a motion by Councilman Corbin and a second by Councilman Jenkins. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Does any council member have any awards recognition or distinguished guests would like to be recognized at this time? Councilman Bowman?
I see somebody that is very, very special in my life out in the audience, and I want to say hello to my wife, Ms. Ursula Bowman.
It's a good time of the year to be doing that.
Okay, Councilman Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not a recognition, but a request for council staff. I've received a request from some citizens that when we vote, that we leave the vote tallies up just a few seconds longer if we can on the screen. Amen.
I see Commissioner Johnson out in the -- I want to say hello, Commissioner. A couple of my other friends are here, and I was surprised to see them today. Mr. and Ms. Durden, your family.
Some good people out here. Chris, you're long.
Yes. Wonder what they're here for?
Did I see a Dottie Bell hiding out back there, too? I thought I saw a Dottie Bell hiding out back there.
Ms. Brandon, I'm so happy to see you out here today.
All right, is there any other council member? Mayor Tyler, the Chair recognized you at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. I, too, would like to recognize all those special people. I know most of them, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Watts-Gage, and also Ms. Dottie Bell. And we just see so many wonderful friends, of course, Mrs. Bowman and my former student Michael out there. Thank you all so much for being here this afternoon. I have two or three announcements, Mr. Chairman. The first one, I want to encourage everyone to support the Walcons Independence Bowl game at 12:33 PM on Wednesday next week, December 27th, by attending or watching on ESPN, we rather that you attend. This year, we're excited to host the FSU, that's Florida State University Seminoles, and the Southern Miss Golden Eagles. This is a great event for our city and an awesome opportunity for us to market the wonderful things we have going on here in the City of Shreveport. We will be doing exactly that in the commercials that will air on ESPN during the game, so we want you to be sure that you make note of those commercials, because we will be there actually just touting some of the wonderful things that's going on in Shreveport with about 30 million viewers. So we're asking you to please support that effort. Be sure to check them out. Also, I want to thank those of you who attended two events last week where we were able to showcase our employees at the Employee Recognition Banquet and the Employees Leadership Academy graduation. Both were held at the Shreveport Convention Center, so thank you if you were able to attend. I also want to thank all of those who came out and supported the Salvation Army on last Thursday in front of Brookshire's Grocery Store on Lion Avenue. I spent more than two hours ringing the bell and collecting donations for the Red Kettle Challenge against my good friend Mel Low Walker in Boja City. Of course, Shreveport prevailed again, and we were able to raise more than $547. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank everyone who participated in all of our Spirit of the Season, the Shreveport Spirit of the Season events that took place in Riverview Park and the Red River District this holiday season. We had something every weekend, beginning the weekend after Thanksgiving, all the way up through last weekend. And also, lastly, want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Those are the announcements that we have for today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's move to reports. Does anyone have any questions in regards to the reports? Seeing none, Mr. Green. Thank you, though. Oh, do we have any questions? I do not see any. Thank you. Did you have something you want to say?
I did, but I can, we can talk about it afterwards. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Now comes for public hearing, Madam Clerk, which was continued on, the public hearing that was continued on December the 12th on Resolution Number 200 of 2017, a resolution stating the City of Shreveport's endorsement of Brentwood Acquisition Shreveport Incorporated to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program and to otherwise provide with respect thereto is called to order. Give us just a minute to see. Ms. Bonney, I didn't see you there. You go right ahead.
Okay, getting worn out, I was trying to.
Make your presentation.
Okay, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. The Restoration Tax Abatement Program is a state incentive that encourages local jurisdiction, municipalities, and local governments to encourage expansion, renovation, and restoration of existing buildings, commercial buildings, or residential buildings. The RTA provides a five-year abatement of ad valorem taxes to the increased value of the renovation. What this means is the taxes are frozen at the level that they're at for 2017. If the abatement goes into effect in 2018, then they will not be assessed for those abatements for the next five years. It can be a business or a homeowner that can utilize this incentive. It cannot be new construction. The property presented for your consideration today is Brentwood Acquisition Shreveport Incorporated, located at 1006 Highland Avenue, which is located in the Central Economic Development District. It was built in 1917, is the oldest hospital in Shreveport. Their primary provision of service is behavioral health. They do chemical dependency for children, adults, and adolescents. It is the largest psychiatric hospital in Louisiana. Today, they are requesting a tax abatement from the city that's calculated at $59,881.94 per year for the next five years totaling $299,909.70. The expected improvements include the renovation, expansion of an additional 22,000 square feet of the facility. They will provide additional patient capacity and care. Approximately 3% of the construction has already started. The project costs are estimated to be about $11,166. Eleven million, yes. The new jobs anticipated is 150 jobs over a five-year period with a payroll of over $5 million. The construction jobs are about 50 with a payroll of about $4 million. Additional services include inpatient care, a dedicated adolescent substance abuse clinic, expanded inpatient services for about, for 55 and older, and dedicated women-specific unit for trauma, marital conflict, gender identity, as well as ECT therapy for adults. I want you to notice that the top job positions are registered nurses, mental health technicians, counselors, social workers, and activity therapy. According to Louisiana Workforce Commission, these are high-demand occupations, and they pay more than living wage. The estimated additional local taxes generated to this project would be $184,000 to this I have some photos of the various dimensions of the hospital. Brentwood representatives are here today, Steve Jones, who's the Business Development Manager, and William Weaver, who's the Site Managing Director for Brentwood. If you have any questions, they'll be glad to entertain them.
Mr. Chair, quick question. For these tax abatements, if somebody is doing or interested in pursuing that for a building downtown, do they go through you, Bonney, or do they go through DDA? Because sometimes I kind of recollect they.
The first step is to apply with the state. Once you've been approved by the state, then the site will submit it to the administration. The administration would approve it. They'd send it to us for processing.
I got you.
And it's the state, you can go to the Economic Development website where it has information on the program, so you can see if the person is eligible for it and what requirements they would need to meet in order to be eligible for it and do an application there. So you can start the process online, and then once they've vetted it, then they reach out to the local, to the City of Shreveport in this case. And so that's what initiates.
And there's a $200, $250 fee to apply.
The only reason I asked about the DDA or Liz before, maybe she's always been an advocate for it, and that's probably why.
Well, there are certainly a number of properties in downtown that are eligible for it, so she's very familiar with it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Jefferson, did you?
Oh, I just wanted to thank you for the presentation and thank the administration for their support and work on this project. Brentwood is in my district, and, you know, it's, there's a number of medical facilities in my district, and I would say that this is one that continually looks out for sort of the interests of the surrounding neighborhood and has been a good neighbor to the community. Their expansion is very welcomed, and to see these kind of good-paying jobs coming to our city is really exciting. I know they've been working hard on this renovation, and to be able to invest like this in the core of our city where it's accessible to a lot of our different neighborhoods, public transportation, all of those kind of things that we were really looking to promote. This ticks all those boxes, so it's a real positive, and we appreciate the efforts that led us to this point.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Okay, at this time, does any member of the public want to speak for? Please come forward. Chair sees none. Does any member wish to speak against this resolution? You'd be recognized at this time. And the Chair sees none, so the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, is there any legislation to be added today?
We have nothing to be added today.
All right, do we have any people who want to speak? The Chair will recognize Vice Chair for the purpose of public comments on agenda items, then he will control the time.
Speaking on zoning, we have Ms., is it Chanigan?
Chanigan?
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor Sri and all, Chairman and all City Councilmember. My name is Chagan Lal Chanayara. My address, 7340 Capistrano Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71105.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, what item and number is it?
C-115, stat 17.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, three minutes, sir.
Okay, and I am here to request Mayor and Council and Chairman to rezoning my property located at 1302 Yuri Drive, Shreveport, which was previously B3 zoning. And after the UDC neoridance, it has been changed to the C2 zoning, so I'm requesting Council to give me C3 zoning.
And this is for introduction today. This is one similar to some that came to us early where, when properties were rezoned, this one didn't fall into a classification that the property owner felt was equivalent to the one that he had before, so he's made the request. And so certainly, there are some good notes, and we appreciate you being here. We won't make the decision today, it'll be at our next meeting, but we certainly thank you for that, and it looks, it looks to be like a good set of remarks there that should lead to a good decision.
And when will be the next meeting?
That's January 9th.
Actually, from December 31st to January 22nd, I am traveling out of country. So is there any way I can appoint some of the representative on behalf of me for this case?
Certainly, and, you know, if you would like to, I'm the councilperson for that district, so if you wanted to maybe email me, you know, or if you had any communications that you need to, you know, share with the council, I'm happy to share that on your behalf, you know, and, but you're welcome to have a representative be here during the hearing.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
During additional discussions.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Just starting, I mean, is there a pressing reason why we couldn't postpone it for him when he gets back in town, or is that?
No, we could do that.
Instead of postponing, I prefer to do, because I have a tenant interested to rent after we fix the zoning problem. She is waiting, actually. See, I don't know until I rented her. So I've already rented, signed lease agreement, everything. When we see requested occupancy certificate, then we both come to know it is rezoned to, so now she is holding, and she is really in hurry, so she right now in road. I offer her my other property, which is in C3 zoning. I told her I will not charge anything until we fix this zoning, but she said this property is not in good neighborhood, so she don't like that location.
I got you. So there is some sense of urgency for us.
Yeah, for her, actually.
Okay.
Just for my reference, this is the two-story building at the corner that used to be a veterinary office and has been through a number of things that's in.
Yes, sir, yeah, that is.
It is, and the staff report from the MPC recommends approving this change. And so, you know, this isn't, and it was a seven-to-one vote, so I mean, it was largely, I mean, certainly would need to get a little bit more information, but I mean, the information included in the packet is generally favorable for this request. You have no, you have no issue with it?
I have not heard opposition, but, I mean, certainly it's being introduced today, so before I, you know, take a, take a look at you. I'd like to hear from the constituency a little bit more, but the information up to this point generally is pretty favorable.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jefferson, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, and you all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Next, we have Mr. Ken Kref. Speaking on Resolution 189.
That's correct.
State your name and address for the record, three minutes.
Kenneth Kref, 157 Archer, Shreveport, 71105. This resolution should be adopted, and early next year, I'm hopeful that the administration and the council will meet with as many neighborhood groups as possible. It'll be a Saturday-only, low-turnout, single-digit election, and tracking election returns on similar taxes. In my part of town, none of the commission propositions on April 29th were approved in those areas, and the collective vote was 58% no, so we really need to promote this, get people out. This is critical, because if it didn't pass in April, it wouldn't do any good to come back in November, six months later. I can't find a single tax rejection that came up again in less than a year that's ever been approved, so it's critical to promote this and get it out there. One of these, I'll point out, has been around since 1921 for the police and fire, so hopefully we can, we can get out and explain the importance of these renewals next April. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No one else to speak, sir.
Okay, let's see. We have no exact performance to be considered today, and there are no items under consent agenda for introduction. Madam Clerk, please continue.
Under regular agenda legislation, Resolution 189, ordering and calling special election to be held in the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the city propositions to authorize the continuation levy and collection of special ad valorem taxes therein, and to also authorize the city to continue to levy and collect a special ad valorem tax for the continuation and maintenance of a Police III Platoon system, originally authorized by Article 14, Section 12 of the City Constitution of 1921.
Submit.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Corbin, second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Please vote. And if motion passes.
Resolution 197, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the City of Shreveport and Lanyab Landing LLC herein after call owner and acting herein through Kenneth G. Lawler, his manager member, his member manager for the private sanitary sewer and water main extensions and related facilities to serve Lakeshore Harbor Estates.
Mr. Chairman, this administration is requiring, requesting that this resolution be postponed pending some further documentation from the developer.
I move for a postponement. Second. Motion by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Corbin. Any discussion? Motion to postpone is approved.
Resolution 200, stating the City of Shreveport's endorsement of Brentwood Acquisition Shreveport, Inc. to participate in the benefits of Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program.
Motion by Councilman, second. Jefferson, second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion?
Resolution 20.
We didn't get a, there we go. And the motion is approved.
Resolution 204, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the City of Shreveport and Silver Point LLC herein after call owner and acting herein through Margaret May, manager for the water and sewer mains and related appetites to serve Silver Point at Lakeshore Unit Number 1.
Submit, Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion by Councilman Corbin, second by Vice Chair Bowman. Any discussion? And that motion is approved.
Resolution 205, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the McNeil Street Pumping Station.
Submit. Second. Okay. Motion by Councilman Jefferson, second by Councilman Jenkins. Discussion? Please vote.
Just in point, if anybody would recall, I mean, this is just to make permanent the agreement.
Right. Please vote. Motion is approved. Madam Clerk, please continue.
On the introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to January 9th, that should be 2018, you have Resolution 206, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the City of Shreveport and Norris Ferry Road LLC herein after call owner and acting herein through William L. Mayfield for the water and sewer improvements and related facilities to serve St. Charles Place Subdivision Number 15. Resolution 207, authorizing mayor to execute a surface and subsurface use payment and release, and to also execute a pipeline right-of-way and easement agreement associated with the expansion of one existing rail path at the City of Shreveport's sludge field location along the Harts Island Road. And Resolution 208, authorizing the placement of a sign on city-owned property.
Is there motion to introduce the resolution?
Submit, Mr. Chair.
Second. Okay, Councilman Corbin, and second by Councilman Jenkins. Is there any discussion?
And point of clarification here, so that Resolution 208 and Resolution 204 are linked?
It's the same development. Right.
204 is for the donation of the water and sewer, and 208 is for a sign.
They're not companions, but they are related to the same property.
I got you. Same subdivision.
And really, what I was wondering is, do we, they have to be, should they be in sequence, but if it doesn't matter if they're independent, it's.
Same neighborhood. Well, it's essentially like, we donated this right-of-way, and, but they want to put a sign on it, so had they put the sign on first and then donated it, wouldn't matter, but.
I get what you're saying, I was like, well, why do we?
Yeah.
Okay, those are adopted.
Just one of those things where the sequence required.
Is this going past the UDC?
Looks like it's a monument sign, so yes.
Larry made me ask that. That's a good question. Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to January 9th, 2018. Ordinance 115, amending the Metropolitan Planning Commission's fee schedule for the City, 151, amending the Metropolitan Planning Commission's fee schedule for the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code relative to fees for appeals. Ordinance 152, closing and abandoning the 20-feet-wide street dedication in the Tucker Subdivision in Section 16 Township 17 North Range 14 West. And Ordinance 153, declaring the city's intention to establish permanent servitudes on certain adjudicated properties for the water and sewer consent decree projects. Ordinance 154, zoning case number C-115-17 is in ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Stoner Avenue, Yuri Drive, Shreveport Kettle Parish, Louisiana, from C2 corridor commercial, no, commercial district to C3 general commercial district. Ordinance 155, zoning case number 117-17, in ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Pyramid Road and Thornhill Avenue, Shreveport Kettle Parish, Louisiana, from R17-7, single-family residential district, and C-1 neighborhood commercial district to C-2 corridor commercial district. Ordinance 156, zoning case number C118-17, in ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northeast corner of North Market Street and Lincoln Drive, Shreveport, Kettle Parish, from C1 neighborhood commercial district to C1, uh, neighborhood commercial small planned unit development district. Ordinance 157, zoning case number C123-17, is in ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northwest east corner of Pines Road and Buncombe Road, Huntington Plaza Shopping Center, Shreveport, Kettle Parish, Louisiana, from C2 corridor commercial district to C3 general commercial district. Ordinance 158, zoning case number 127-17, is rezoning property located on the north side of Standard Off Road, east of Lotus Lane, south of Union Pacific Railroad, Shreveport, Kettle Parish, Louisiana, from R17, single-family residential district to RMHS Residential Manufactured Homes subdivision.
Is there a motion to introduce these ordinance?
Submove.
Motion by Councilwoman Lynch, second by Councilman Corbin. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Okay, and, uh...
I'm sorry, did you have something?
After we vote, it's fine.
And the motion case.
So, uh, ordinance 155, I thought that property was already zoned for the use. Does anybody, either whether that's... I guess it's Mr. Sweeney, who I should be addressing this question to.
Yes, the, that, you're talking about 155?
Yes. It's on federal lot?
There's a slice of property that's still zoned R17 there, and it's C1 along with it. And what they want is C2 zoning, which will match up with the zoning that's adjacent to them, and allow for them to build a bank, that's where the bank wants to go, and a possible future commercial use.
Yes, when we, I did, we, we, I think we already did a site plan.
No, this, there isn't a site plan approved for that site yet.
But, I mean, I will say this, on my agenda, there has been a site plan shown to me on some piece of legislation about nine or 10 months ago.
But it was probably a conceptual plan, but it was never approved site plan.
Okay.
We get a lot of conceptual plans.
And they were trying to maybe rezone the property behind the Piermont lot, maybe is what was going on then?
Not aware of anything behind the Piermont lot, but this property's been in discussion for, for several months.
If I could request, because I'm recalling the same thing, Councilman Jenkins, is that there was a discussion about it. It could have been an engineering discussion, or it could have been, you know, but if we could just get, um, a history of what other legislative decisions we've been asked to make on this particular track here, um, that would help us remember.
He may be able to address that, because I'm not.
Because, yeah, a few months ago, we saw the abandonment of a servitude through this property for, for sewer servitude.
Even prior to that abandonment...
It's subsequent to that, I would thought, as it was more recent that we did something.
Anyway, and I mean, I'm still in favor of the whole thing going forward. I don't have any, I just want to make sure that we're...
Well, there, there's no, there's no approved site plans on record for this property. Because all of our research shows that it's just been, it's gone kind of back and forth, but the, there's no approved site plans that we have on record for that.
If we could, let's just find what was on our agenda. It was in the past year. I mean, it was, so we can have council staff do that.
Perhaps y'all can go back and look and see what was on the agenda, because I have no idea.
If you want to send our office, um, any of the information you have on that legislative history, we'll also get the...
Okay, that's in this report.
Right.
You've already got it.
Okay.
You've got everything we've got.
Okay, great. We'll also get the clerk's office to provide it to the council.
Okay. And I'll tell you what, it may be the properties on Mitchell Street, which is behind Piermont. We had several residential zoned properties. And maybe we approve those changes, this is what we get.
Could be, could very well be.
I think that's right. I mean...
The sensitive issue has always been access to Mitchell, and that will be a sensitive issue to, to address under site plan review and approval, because it is a residential street.
Yeah, and, uh, the two, so the R17, just to the west of it, are those properties, um, where, are they occupied residential at the moment?
I believe so, along Mitchell Street, yes, sir.
Because the one that's on the corner of Mitchell and Fairfield is a business.
That is correct.
Okay.
Mark, I understand them wanting the entire piece of property zoned the same. We recently made changes that allowed a financial, a financial institution in C1.
That's correct.
But they're looking for some additional things, that's why they want to go to C1?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That, yes, and we actually had that conversation with them, saying, you know, you could do a C1 and still have your drive-through bank, because we did make that change, you're absolutely correct. But they said, we would like to have C2, which would be similar to the zoning that's near us and allow us greater flexibility.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, and, uh, listen, once again, I'm supportive of this. C2 across the street from R1, is that problematic?
Let me go back and look at the actual case here.
Well, I think that's why he said the site plan was going to need to be sensitive.
Right, the site, the site plan is why the sensitivity factor is going to be very important here as to what is allowed in terms of access to Mitchell, or any access at all.
And you can tell based on the other commercial properties around there.
Right.
That, uh, you know, their access has been sensitive to the surrounding area.
That is correct.
I mean, there's a way to do it.
Yeah, I just don't understand why they need the C2. Have they explained to you why they want C2?
Yes, sir, because, again, C2 zoning is, is adjacent to them. They wanted to have the flexibility to have additional uses there. They don't know exactly what they want adjacent to the bank. Right now, the only thing that they're going to be pursuing in the near future with a site plan will be the construction of a bank. And then the other lot will remain undeveloped until such time as they find a, a good user for that site. And so the issue will become access to Piermont and access, and whether or not access will even be allowed on to Mitchell at all. And that's something we'll be in discussion with the city engineer on, on this, once the site plan is submitted.
I got you. I mean, I'd really like to know a little bit about what usage they would like for the back half of that lot that would necessitate C2, but...
And at this, at this time, the applicant has said they don't really know. We had one possible project, but it went away. And so all this left is the bank has told us strictly, all they want to do right now is the bank building, and then later they'll come back and submit a site plan for a other use. It could end up being an office use, it could be something, a, a restaurant, it could be a multitude of things.
But an office use could still be C1, right?
That is correct.
But a restaurant would not be able to be C1, correct?
You can, you can put a, I believe you can put a restaurant in C1, yes. I'm, I'm sorry, but my mind's, I'm hitting a brick wall on that, but I believe you can put a restaurant in C1, yes.
And where the, do you know off the top of your head the hour difference between C1 and C2?
There are no hours difference. Remember, we don't regulate hours anymore under the UDC. Because no other market regulates hours.
I mean, I'm just saying. I guess I have some sympathy for people that are directly across the street.
But, but, be, be aware of the fact that many of the more sensitive type uses would require a special use permit, so that if somebody wanted to build something that was more impactful to the neighborhood above, above and beyond just a restaurant or, or office-type business use, you would end up probably seeing that as a special use permit, which would require a public hearing before the MPC Board, much like what we talked about previously, when we talked about the liquor store.
To me, this, I understand the sensitivity, and this reminds me of, um, there's a street in, uh, in the northern part of Highland, near some of the, uh, commercial development that supported, that built up to support the medical area. And they, uh, you know, had to design it to make sure that it was, you know, mindful of the fact that there were residences across the street. And it works, you know, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, you gotta design it right, but, I mean...
Yes, but it's very simi, eerily similar to the King's Highway Don Seafood in the sense that you have one zoning on the front, the half that...
Yeah.
I mean, you see what I'm saying, because...
Well, you could, that's, that could be an option to, to address it if you thought that was necessary.
I mean, I, I know you probably don't want a site that's got more than one zoning in the sense...
And that doesn't, that's, yeah, that's true, because that's not considered, uh, basically good planning. You don't split zone a lot. It's much, we can do everything to control the issues under the site plan review process that you're concerned with. Everything, which includes buffering, screening, and access to a street or not. So understand, that process actually safeguards the neighborhood, because that will be the very thing that we will be looking for along with the city engineer to verify that it is done correctly.
My mind is not, I mean, my mind is less concerned about an exit from the bank. It is just what that other potential use could be once we move it to C2. So I'm going to just review that amount.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, appreciate all that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 144, amending the 2017 Community Development Special Revenue Fund budget, and it has one amendment. And that amendment is to substitute the attached copy of the ordinance by the copy of the ordinance that was originally introduced. And the new ordinance updates and grants...
Special to approve the amendment.
Updates and incomes.
A second?
Okay. I hear motion by Councilman, uh, Corbin, second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion on the amendment? Please vote. Amendment's adopted.
Submove, as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lynch, second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion approved.
Ordinance 145, amending the 2017 Downtown Entertainment Economic Development District Special Revenue Fund budget, and it has one amendment, and it is to substitute the attached with the ordinance that was orig, by, um, for the copy of the ordinance that was originally introduced.
Submoved on the amendment?
Second. Motion by Councilman Cor, I mean, Councilman Emerson, and second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion approved.
Submove, as amended.
A second?
Okay, Councilwoman Lynch, second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion approved.
Ordinance 146, I'm amending the 2007 Real Fund Development Special Revenue Fund budget.
Submove. Second.
Okay, Councilman Corbin, second by, I didn't hear who added that.
Councilperson.
Any discussion? Please vote. And that's approved.
Ordinance 149, amending and reenacting certain provisions of Chapter 10, Chapter 62, and Chapter 78 of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to allowing open container and public outdoor consumption of alcohol beverages in designated downtown areas, which include sidewalk cafes or bistros adjacent to certain premises, and to allow open container and outdoor consumption of alcohol beverages citywide to include on city property when a lawful local city temporary special event alcohol permit is obtained, and to allow for an applicant to apply for a local city temporary special event alcohol permit in any area within the city of Shreveport. And it has one amendment.
Um, before we, before we, um, make any motion on it, I was curious, um, do we have any discussion on this? I mean, this is one that, I know we talked briefly about what it does. I know Jerry and I also looked at it to see there are some things that this do that, that maybe we don't want to go all in with some of it. You know, essentially, the, um, the motivators of this were, um, one is that, you know how, we have a special event permitting process, but when the event is outside, the council still has to pass that sort of outdoors, um, you know, something to allow the event to be outdoors. And so this allows that to be part of the special event permitting process, so that we don't have to pass separate legislation. So I think that is very, very positive, and I would imagine everybody probably feels comfortable with that. The secondary portion is that we have a, um, we have a, a process in place already that deals with allowing, if somebody is, like, say, a downtown cafe like Robinson Film Center or something, and they want to have some seating on the sidewalk in front of their, some little bistro seating up front, we do have a process to regulate that, um, but it did not speak to whether or not somebody would be able to have a glass of wine or something out there, and so this adds some control to that and how that would work. So those are two elements of this that sort of motivated this, um, to come, uh, before us. But the ordinance does go a little bit further to talk about, um, to-go cups, which is something that, um, you know, the Bossier City Council had discussed, and that is an, um, that is an area that may bear some further discussion. And so I wanted to throw those three things out there and make sure that council feels comfortable with whatever decision we're moving forward with. This is not something that we have some sort of looming timeline that we have to meet. So we want to make sure it gets good discussion, knowing that it's been the end of the year and there's a lot going on if we haven't had a chance to, uh, to discuss that as much openly. So before I made a motion, I want to, I want to just see if there were questions.
Councilwoman Lynch?
I want to say, not that I know that much about drinking, but, um, let me, let me just make sure I understand. Okay, there you go.
You know what a go cup is, right?
I know what a go cart is.
It holds a lot of cups.
Yeah, right. Okay, so explain to me in layman's terms what the amendment is, is about.
This is for approved areas to be able to go between venues with a, um, you know, with a plastic cup. So like, I think our intent, I actually think it's a little further than what at least our intent was, which is why my motion would really be to postpone it till the next meeting, so we can kind of work this out a little bit closer, because, and I could be wrong, but I think that it's maybe allowing more than what we intended. Because what we were thinking is, you know, there are some special events where, um, there may be a few venues, like an art wall, or a progressive dinner, or something like that, where you may want someone to be able to have a, a drink that goes from venue to venue. But that's not something that I think we intend to be in place all the time, you know? It should be also part of this sort of special event permit, or, or perhaps limited to a very small, um, area where that's allowed. So I think those are the points that we're looking to further discussion on. And as, correct me if I'm wrong, or, you know, if there are additional insights, please let me know. But, uh, you know, I think that the intent was really to be able to allow it where appropriate, but maybe not all the time.
Now, you, you, you begin more, I'm sorry.
Okay, so let me, let me ask, um, well, this says after further discussions with SPD, it seems a little nightmarish. I mean, not that I'm opposed to other people walking and drinking.
Right, you feel like wheelchair riding. You okay with that?
It inhibits bone growth. I do know that. So, um, SPD, are we, I mean, how is this going to be enforced, say, if there's, you know, what we were talking about, pub crawl, art wall? I guess I'm just trying to get a visual on what this looks like in terms of it being, here's somebody else that doesn't know that much about drinking.
Yes, ma'am. And we talked with City Attorney Bradford, as well as Ms. Strand, and, and it, it is going to be challenging, but we think we can deal with it, uh, and certainly, this is something that is, is fluid. And if we do have problems, I think it's important that we bring it, uh, back to... that we bring it back to the mayor, the CAO, and this body to make an assessment of how we need to move forward from there.
Come in.
Okay, thank you.
We've tonight informed, now, what was your statement again?
It, it is more than likely going to be challenging for us initially since it's something new. However, we think we can deal with it. If that's not the case, then certainly we would come back to this body in the appropriate fashion.
With the present resources, you don't need to put in extra resources?
No, sir.
So your concern, Mr. Everson, in postponing is to get some more feedback and information?
Yeah, my concern is, is related strictly to the to-go cup portion of it. The other two portions I'm very comfortable with. I think that, and I think SPD is probably, you know, the feedback I've received is that they're comfortable with those portions. That third portion, I just think that the language that we have right now may be more permissive than our intention was, and we may wanna dial that back a little bit to make sure that we have the appropriate regulations in place.
So you would make a motion without the amendment, you're saying?
Not today. No, I was gonna make a motion to postpone so that we can modify that portion. I think we've identified the other portions of the legislation work and are good, but that, that third portion is one that I think we need a little bit of revision on.
And we can re-post it. Councilman Corbin would like to weigh in at this time.
I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I think that we've solved, you know, we're like ninety percent there. And, and I agree with Councilman Everson. I, I do, I support postponing this for another meeting or two, just to give us a chance to talk about the to-go cup part of it, you know, whether we come back and we designate some areas where to-go cups are allowed, or we further define the festival atmosphere or, or multiple location atmosphere. But we need to get that part right, so I would support postponing.
If there's no opposition, I would go ahead and make that motion to postpone?
Second.
Motion's been made and second, Councilman, uh, moment. And any discussion, let's vote then. And motion to postpone is been approved.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have anything on the table legislation that is to be removed.
Well, then, there are no property, I, I see Councilman Everson. Did you have something?
Oh, no, it must have been a.
Okay, no, that's fine. Councilman Jenkins, did you have something?
In respect to an email from Karen, ordinance 150 of 2017, shall we remove that from the table and remove it from the agenda, or should we just keep it on the table?
I would make that motion to remove from the table and the agenda.
Okay.
And do I have a second?
Sure.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote.
To remove.
Motion to approve, to, to remove. And that is approved. Okay. Got it?
Okay, we have no property standards appeals for this meeting.
Okay. No ZBIA. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees?
Did we approve the clerk being gone? Did we approve the clerk's vacation? I don't remember that.
That would be a chair specifically.
Yeah, yeah, I got that taken care of.
Just as a committee update real quick, we do have an infrastructure committee meeting planned for very early in the new year, so I did wanna go ahead and mention that now, is that that's scheduled on January 8th at 1:00 PM. And the primary subject on that is going to be that legislation that came before us that deals with the small cell regulations, the towers that involve the 5G network. So that is a discussion that I think is, you know, somewhat new to some of us, and certainly for me it is, so we're still learning, and look forward to the opportunity to hear a little bit more about it that day. We will also, and I appreciate the administration very much on this, because they were so timely in getting it to us, is the next phase of potential bike lanes that could be a part of next year's streets plan. So those will just be introduced to the public at that time. And then they're, from what I understand, the administration is planning on doing some other informational meetings about that, but we will go ahead and, and introduce those at that meeting. So those will be two interesting subjects. We will, I do anticipate we'll have another infrastructure committee meeting in January, too, because we do have a lot of things to go over and, and, you know, love infrastructure. There's a lot going on, so we got a lot to talk about.
In doubt. Okay. Quick thing for the clerk. Can you make sure that both the SWEPCO and the CenterPoint appropriate groups are notified about that meeting? I don't think they have any issue with the cell tower discussion, but because it's rights of way and they have electronic stuff, I want them to make sure that they're at least aware of it. And to come in and, you know, just a cursory overview on the proposal just so that it doesn't affect them. Okay? Thank you.
All right.
I mean, if that makes sense to you. I mean, I don't wanna create another issue without them.
We'll bury it. Let's move then to the clerk's report and report.
There, there's no clerk report today.
Except for Lynette's got some cool glasses on. They look sharp.
I wanted to mention, we had a interesting public safety meeting earlier today, and I believe that some of the things that came out of that would be beneficial to the citizens. So I just wanted to appreciate everybody that came. And although they were looking for you today, 'cause they thought that you were a member, and you keep saying you're not, but you, we'll make sure you are this time.
It's not really effective what I'm saying or not, but I am not right now.
As a very popular former chair of it, I suppose everybody wants to keep putting you back on there.
Additional communications from the mayor?
No, thank you, sir.
All right. I'd like to, from the council, I'd like to say, a little late birthday, happy birthday to Councilman Everson, and to all of those you out there like me who did not get invited to the birthday party.
Yep. I'm sure, I'm sure.
Been late on partying.
Missed a great party.
A lot of time.
Any other council members?
Um, I, oh, go ahead. Are you? Okay, the, I had two things for Mike Woods, but, I would, but I think he may have exited.
Yes, he was on vacation. He came in.
Came in specifically for this. Okay, so, one thing I was gonna just ask him for an update on the crosswalk for Seminary. You saw my text on that. I did confirm that they were waiting on some item on an email, but I'd like a little update on that. Obviously, there's no sense of urgency on it.
Okay.
If you'll just shoot us an email.
Okay.
'Cause I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
Oh, okay, okay.
If you'll send me an email, I'll make sure that.
I will send you the chain of the emails. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then, the other question, I would at some point like to have a discussion about the people and permits and the certifications. I don't know if, Chair, have you had any further discussions about the folks and permits, about the certifications and, okay. He knows what that's about, and so does Brian. He's not here today either, so, and then, sometime in the new year, I'd like to have a discussion about Ackert Street, when we could do that. I know Patrick's hiding back there when I say that, but.
No, no, he's not hiding. We, we've had some discussions, Councilman Jenkins, about Ackert, and we'll be glad to share some of that offline.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we, we do need to have the utility companies at the table because that has been an issue for us in that we could not proceed actually with what our plans were because we had utility companies out there doing the work, and it delayed us. So we're gonna be working to try to get that resolved. And I've already had.
Very familiar with the utility company issue.
Are you?
Very. I'm a little more concerned about the consent decree issues now, but that's.
Absolutely. Well, we, we're working on trying to get those resolved. They finally did a briefing with me about a week ago, and so we've given some directives, and, you know, we're gonna be intimately involved because we need to make sure we can meet those deadlines. But it is, it has been delayed, but we, we have come up with a plan to try to overcome some of those challenges.
Fantastic.
All right. Yes, sir.
Quick brief on what those plans are.
Chair recognizes Councilman Everson.
Thank you.
Oh, that was an old one. All right, Councilman Corbin.
Thank you.
You can gather the thing.
It's very quickly. Councilman Jenkins and I attended the groundbreaking for Red River Range earlier this week. I guess yesterday. Yesterday?
Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday. I've lost track of dates. I wanna say thank you to the administration and the various departments. It's a project that's been a long time being planned and worked through, and we've had a few challenges, but was glad to see the groundbreaking and ready to see that investment in Street Port.
Okay. Councilman Bradford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two, two, two items. One, my first one is regarding, and I don't know if the other council members are receiving these, these communications, but there seems to be a very high volume of roaming neighborhoods, breaking into cars, and taking things from other people's carports and so forth, especially in my district. North Highlands has been a very chronic community in which those, those activities are happening. And some areas around Willow Point, and, and I was wondering if there has been any responses from the police mayor to sort of, to address those issues.
Absolutely. We address any time, any time there is an issue in any community, we address those issues. We've, I've not heard about the high volume lately. We, you know, there, there was a high volume, but we've actually shown improvements in, in many of those areas. Now, we can call up the police chief and he can come and respond. Okay?
Bro. To mayor and council, yes, we, we have been getting, we, we received several emails from Mr. Art Per Year Direction.
Yes.
And the Area 1 XO, the CLOs, and those that worked at area have met with individuals from that North Highlands area. There was also some data requested from Carroll Parish Sheriff Steve Prater. Wanted some data on North Highlands east of Highway 1. We gave him that data. And on this past Thursday, I think the North Highlands Neighborhood Association had a meeting this morning, and our people were there, and they talked with, with those residents there. Some other things came up that we were later told were not a part of that meeting, but that Thursday and even prior to, our people met with a Mister, Miss Lucky, and they also met with a Miss Carrigan and talked with them and some of the other residents, which actually told our guys that they had not done a good job of contacting the police. They were communicating amongst themselves, but they had been derelict in calling the police. So those meetings, from what I understand, went successful. I was also told that the Neighborhood Association meeting that Thursday went well, too, and there have been some constant communication and between our Area 1 XO, the Area 1 Lieutenant, and some of the residents of North Highland. And we're trying to keep that communication open so that we can address the issues there. There were two arrests that were made relative to some burglaries in that area, and we're trying to wait and see if those two arrests will clear up some of those other issues. And one of the things we found out in that area is that some of the people that are traveling through there are not actually from there. They are coming from other parts of town, and they are trying to take advantage of unlocked doors and things of that nature to enter cars, possibly even commit some burglaries and/or relocate into wherever it is that they are from. So hopefully, the two arrests that we have made will give some light to what is going on there that's kind of similar to what have been happening in other neighborhoods. Some people are responsible for multiple burglaries or car break-ins, and hopefully, that's the case, but we're gonna continue to try to address those issues to bring them some relief.
Okay, great. I appreciate that, Chief. And again, some of these instances that I was reported to, to the clerk, and he passed on you, was prior to the community meeting last, last Thursday. And I know you guys were there, but, but I know, you know, this season, things like this happen.
Yes, sir.
And I, and I just wanted to make sure that you had, without revealing any, any type of strategies that he was addressing those in a way that would reduce or eradicate that activity. Now, one other issue that happened, actually on my street, on Independence, in the twenty-eight, I mean, twenty-nine hundred block of Independence, on last Saturday, there was some, the same type of behavior. And my neighbors say that they called the police office, and it was an hour before, before a patrol unit came out. What's, what's, how is those type of call-ins addressed in relation to response time?
Okay, well, I tell you, we can look into that issue to see if there's anything specific for that delay, but sometimes if there, if the officers are tied up on other calls, if they're already down, then sometimes that call may hold. It's unfortunate. Sometimes, sometimes a flood of calls may come in. They're responding to other incidents, and when they come in, if there's not a officer in a neighboring district that can respond to that call, unfortunately, it is held until we can get somebody up to send to it. But if it's a 911 issue, then sometimes even from a farther district, we can try to get somebody there. But sometimes, if the units that are in that area are down on calls, sometimes between accidents, other burglaries or officers needing assistance on other calls sometimes will cause a call to be held some.
So, and I understand priority, prioritizing your, your responses to various incidents, but what would be the average time, you know, if, if a car burglar occurred, what, what would be your average response time to a, to a, to a resident?
I, I would really have to look at data to try to give you something sensible, but it just, it just depends on if the units in that particular district are down on something, and then, again, they would have to go to the neighboring districts. Many times, what the dispatcher will do is will notify the sergeant in that area that we have these calls holding. And then, from that standpoint, the sergeant will try, or at least they'll communicate with the officers to see if they're on something that they could get back in service on and answer those calls. So it just varies. To give you a definite timeframe, I couldn't do that standing right here, 'cause each incident sometimes is kind of unique to itself.
I understand, but you understand also that if, I mean, neighbors don't know the scenarios on how police officers are dispatched into their communities, and if, and if they don't, they, they, to them, my car just got robbed, and my purse is missing, and, and they're anxious that somebody will come out and, and help them. And if it's delayed for any length of time, then they don't understand the, the scenarios of, of priority. So I, those questions were actually, I don't really answer. And I have a better understanding of how I can relay that back to some of these guys that, that was affected last Saturday morning.
Yes, sir.
But, but they did come out, but they, but, but again, when somebody's sitting out there on their porch waiting for somebody to show up, and they not, they, they're still waiting, they don't, they don't understand what's happening in the background.
Yes, sir. And, and we tried to, to at least get our officers also to do a bit of PR on that, too, when you, when they respond. If, if you can let that, that citizen know that, that they are important, was just something that was set aside. If they can let them know some of how we operate and how those calls are sometimes, that can kind of help better. But yeah, I do understand that, and I wish that, that we had an answer that would alleviate all that, but we try to do the best that we can. Also, we did make some arrests from some incidents in the Willow Point area. We also made some arrests from some burglaries that some neighbors called in, actually in progress, vehicle thefts over in Nantucket Harbor. And so we, we have been benefiting from neighbors being active and calling us when they see things out of place or see things happening. And that, that engagement with us has caused us to be successful in, in making multiple arrests.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Those are my areas. So thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
If I could, if I could just piggyback, I wanted to congratulate police chief and his department. Today, we graduated thirty new cadets.
Wow, that's great.
So we'll have more. We'll have more people to. We'll have more people to patrol out there, Councilman Bradford. This year, it, that totals up to 51 new graduates that we've done just this year. And so, I understand we've got another class coming up.
Yes, ma'am. We're already working, and we, we have, I think, about 200 personnel, I think, to, at least applications that are going through to try to find us some, some good products to send out to the academy. Hopefully, as I said, our, our numbers are, are up to five, this, this 30 that graduated brought us up to, to 530. And we are looking forward to getting them trained and get them out, and we'll be pushing hard for our February class, and we're gonna try to get a large number in that. And hopefully, if we can get at least about 45 in there, I'm gonna shoot for 50, but we're gonna try to get that number up, and we will be headed into 17 in that class, I mean, 18 in that class, if we get those numbers practically at full, full strength.
Thank you.
Okay. I just, I just want to point that out. We are aggressively trying to recruit and retain good, good officers. Chief Crump has put in place some different policies to help us overcome some of the challenges we had with recruitment.
Yes.
And we can see that we've got a lot more now coming in, a lot more interest, and a lot more graduations. So, we're, we're excited about that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
We can put more people on the street to help patrol.
Ma'am?
Is there age women?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
We gotta pass all...
Must be fiscally fit.
Must be fiscally fit.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. My last...
Okay, go ahead.
Sir? Thank you. I obviously addressed the chair this time.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Now, the chair is about to, this official capacity as chair, hold this last official duty, and that is the election of new officers. But, Mr. Chairman, before you did it, I would like to congratulate you on your year of chairmanship. I think, I think you served this capacity with great honor and distinction. You directed us this year, and I was very proud of your sensitivity to the council members and, and the professionalism in which you conducted yourself.
Thank you.
I, I just, I just, I wanted to say, you was a great vice chair. You was even a better chairman.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other council member just now? Okay, let's move on to the public comments. Vice Chair will control the time.
First, we have Mr. Thomas Sweeney. Mr. Sweeney? State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thomas Sweeney, 2306 Lake Shore Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71103. I came in tonight to ask the council, have y'all made any decisions on about these guns, the guns and the violence in the community, and ask that y'all would take in consideration to put what we would call a, we used, they used to have it here, where they would stop these youngsters and check these cars to see if they had guns in them, but the citizens started hollering about profiling, and they stopped, and that these guns, these youngsters should be checked with these cars, because they're really packing hard, and they don't mind shooting, especially over there where I am, over there on Lake Shore and Darian, West College, Portland, and Laurel. They, it's, it's a lot of shooting going on over there. And, and about the police response on certain things, and I don't mean no harm to Chief Trump, but we, there's a lot of your officers are backed up behind these buildings, five or six cars, door to door, just sitting there, maybe 45, 50 minutes, just talking. And when something happens, that's where they are. But it needs, we want to see if we can get this done, to start stopping these youngsters and checking these vehicles, or either they check, they do a sorority check, right? When they stop these people, for see if they drinking, and the same thing can be done by these weapons. It's, it's just about every night over there that there's guns going off and people shooting. So, we, you know, like to get this stopped.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Mr. Sammy Mears. State your name and address, Mr. Sammy, and you have three minutes, sir.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. Today, Don Handy and I went to the Airline Trejo's over in Bossier City and had a very good Christmas lunch together, and he ordered what he ordered, as well as I had grilled fish with french fries, salad with house dressing and coke. I held on to the $30, and he wondered if I had used it for anything else, and I said that I had not. Stop it. I used the, I decided to hang on to the $30, knowing that this would be good for the two of us to have a good lunch together. We've gone there before, and I've eaten there before, so I held on to the money, so we could do that. Don almost forgot about it, but I contacted him and told him that I didn't forget. He said, "Are you sure it's today?" I said, "Yes, because they have a council meeting at 3:00, Don, and I'm not gonna miss it." So, we go to Airline Trejo's first, and then, I'll be at the council meeting. So, he remembered. He just didn't mark it on the calendar, but I did. Then they gave us two new calendars for 2018 after we had our meal, and I'm going to enjoy my Christmas just as well, for going to Noel United Methodist Church on Christmas Eve, as they will have two candlelight services from, at 3:00 in the Worship Center, and then 4:30 in the Sanctuary. I've done this before, and I really enjoy their services in the Highland area. And then, Christmas Day, I am going to do what I did before. I'm gonna walk all the way down there to First United Methodist Church for a Christmas lunch and enjoy that to round out my Christmas, because the thing is that it's important to me, and as you can see, James, you and Willie saw me wearing these two buttons on Christmas Day. I, I mean, or the last time that we ate over there at the soup lunch at Church of the Holy Cross. So, I got this one at the, Federal Credit Union. I had to have one. If, if they ran out and I missed this, I'd be a loss, but I had to get one right away. That's why I needed one. And of course, I'm sure that everyone is going to have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, because I know that I will, and I know it's been kind of a tough year for all of us, but we've all had to face whatever we've had to face. And of course, as I told James Yu at the, at the soup lunch, the best thing that I talked about this year was when I mentioned about the two TV antennas that were married that you really enjoyed. Wedding was awful, the reception was great, everyone got a good laugh, but James, you know you got the best one.
That's right. We sure didn't miss Jeff and Oliver and Michael, didn't we? And Jerry Bowman.
Uh-uh, uh-uh, Jeff was there.
No, I was there the previous...
He was there a week before the two of you.
I was there the previous.
So, if you think, if you think he was there, uh-uh.
Well, well, Oliver then, okay.
Oh, oh, well, as far as Jeff, uh-uh. That's, that's what Dwayne says on what's happening. Uh-uh.
Had to get Ms., had to get Ms. Delois one of those pens, so she can write one of those.
Good evening.
Good evening. Will you state your name and address for the record, please? You have three minutes, sir.
I'd just like to take a moment and say, I'd like to gentleman say, there's too much going on...
I need your name and your address for the record.
Wayne McKinnon, 1610 Cox Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71108. Mine is, for the last 10 years, I've been called the Shreveport Police Department day and night about the boom boxes and drugs at the end of our grocery store and the shooting all through the neighborhoods. I call six, 10 times a night. They tell me, "Well, we're sending an officer out." Sending them out is fine, but when are they gonna get there? See, we have a problem with that. Kids trying to go to school, they can't study at night, they can't go to school, but you want them playing football at everybody else's school, but they have to go home and study at night, try to get their lesson out, and I be out trying to help them out, but where are the officers? We can't get any help. It's wrong. I'm a taxpayer, senior citizen. I did my time. I served two years and none. I hate to wake up in the middle of the night and go out to start open fire, then you want to know why. But these boom boxes are ridiculous. They wake you up in the morning, and they're all night long. They say, "The officer just passed by." Yes, he'll drive up and drive down Linwood, up and down, up and down. They don't go and do anything about it. They always park behind stores, buildings, schools, but they never in the neighborhood where they're needed. And the drug is ridiculous over there. We need someone to come out and do something about it. I'm aware, taxpayer, and I thank y'all for listening for a minute. Y'all have a good day.
If I could, I appreciate you bringing your concerns, and I do want to, to mention...
Mr. McKinnon?
Mr. McKinnon, I was gonna say, I do know that recently, there was a community liaison officer, the one who serves that district, now has an office in that district at the, at the Hattie Perry Community Center, and so, hopefully, that will be a helpful, if you have not been able to reach out to Adrian Hall, or Ferguson, that, I'd be happy to get you her number, and maybe you could talk with her about some ongoing concerns about that, that maybe they could address in a different way. She's very responsive, and so, I think, I think you'll enjoy talking with her if you've not gotten a chance to yet.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Yeah, I have to...
Thank you, sir.
No one has to speak, sir.
Okay, that concludes our council meeting, and we'll move to the next item, is the election of officers. Mr. Chairman, our office did some research, and we have confirmed that you have held the shortest meeting in the history of Shreveport City councils. So, the next chairman will have a big record to try.
No pressure.
No pressure. Well, let's open it up, election of council over the position of chairman, and I'd like to take the opportunity as chairman to nominate the best all-around guy in Shreveport, the Honorable Jerry Bowman Jr. as candidate for chairman.
Second?
I have a second.
Chairman, that's a nomination. That's a nomination.
Nomination. I'm sorry. I got a little carried away there, all-around guy. Yes. Is there any other?
Yeah, and any other nominations?
Okay. Any other nominations?
Okay. Now, you can move for him to be...
Okay, move unanimous, that he be accepted as nominated and elected as chairman. If you all please vote. Councilman, remember, you have to stand.
Well, I think you can hit the...
It's actually, it's actually a quamation, but unanimous. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I believe, I believe for the news media here that we've made history today, if I'm not mistaken, because Jerry's mom served as chairman of the council, and it's being the first female of chairperson of the council.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to, is, is the position of vice president...
Yes, vice chairman is next.
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Councilman Oliver Jenkins as our vice chairman.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second?
Second, by councilman. Any other nominations? Let's please vote. And the vice chair can vote for himself. Okay, and congratulations, councilman. And that concludes our election and a gentleman for our council. We have one other thing before we adjourn, please. I recognize Councilman Jenkins.
I'd like to recognize my good friend Ken Craft for sending it, to send us out in the spirit of the season.
Santa Claus, number one, North Pole Plaza. And you know the address is the same as it was on Archer. Like FDR said 80 years ago this week in a fireside chat, "We can live, we can love, we can laugh, we can move forward with courage and confidence." When I point...
Audience participation for the last word.
When I point, "Twas the night for Christmas, and all through the house, not a creature was stirring, not even a..."
Mouse.
"...the stockings were hung by the chimney with care, in hopes that Saint Nicholas soon would be..."
Here.
"...the children were nestled all snug in their beds, while visions of sugarplums danced in their..."
Eyes.
"...and Mama in her kerchief, and I, my cap, had just settled in for a long winter's..."
Yeah.
"...when out on the lawn there rose such a clatter, I sprang from the bed to see what was the..."
Man.
"...away of the window I flew like a flash, tore open the shutter and threw up the..."
Ashes.
Boy, this is fun. The moon on the breast of the new fallen snow gave a luster of midday to objects, when what to my wondering eyes should appear but a manchus sleigh, and a tiny..."
Rain.
"...with a little old driver so lively and quick, that I knew in a moment it must be..."
Same.
"...where a rapid den eagles as coursers they came, and he whistled and shouted and cawed them..."
Ahem.
"...now dasher and dancer and prancer and vixen, on common or cupid or dunder and to the top of the porch, to the top of the wall, now dash away, dash away, dash away, as dry leaves that before the wild hurricane fly, when they meet with an obstacle and mount to the..."
Sky.
"...so up to the housetop as coursers they flew, with a sleigh full of toys, and Saint Nicholas..."
Two.
"...then in a twinkling I heard on the roof the prancing and pawing of each little..."
Roof.
"...as I drew in my hand, turning around down the chimney, Saint Nicholas came with a..."
Bam.
"He was dressed all in fur, from his head to his foot, and his clothes were all tarnished with ashes and..."
Soot.
"His eyes, how they twinkled, his dimples are merry, his cheeks were like roses, his nose like a..."
Chair.
"His drawly little mouth was drawn up like a bow, and the beard of his chin was as white as the..."
Snow.
"The stop of a pipe he held tight in his teeth, and the smoke it encircled his head like a..."
Reef.
"He had a broad face and a little round belly that shook when he laughed like a bowl full of..."
Tea.
"He was chubby and plump, a riot jolly old elf, and I laughed when I saw him, in spite of..." "...a wink of his eye and a twist of his head soon gave me to know I had nothing to..."
Thread.
"He spoke not a word, but went straight to his work and filled all the stockings, and he turned with a..."
Shirt.
"He sprang to his sleigh, to his team gave a whistle..." No, wait, back up, Ken. "...and laying a finger aside of his nose and giving a nod at the chimney, he, he sprang to his sleigh, to his team gave a whistle, and away they uploaded like the down of a..."
Whistle.
"...but I heard him exclaim ere he drove out of sight. Happy Christmas to all, and to all a..."
Good night.
"Good night." Thank you.
Did you adjourn? Did you adjourn? Adjourned. Well done.